Okay. Connor's the only one not in, so let's call it to order. Is there any guest business to start out with today? I don't think so. No? All right. Action items. Let's, is there-
Do we have to do the minutes first, Roger?
Oh, that's what I meant. Well, that's part of the action items, the minutes. Are there any change-
Yeah, there's a couple corrections.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna ask if there are any changes or comments concerning the June minutes. Marlene?
Yeah. Kristen is Hunt, not Hun. H U N T is in Tom. That's spelled wrong.
Okay.
And they say that our meeting adjourned at 6:14, but we just started at 6:00, so.
Yeah, it did. The regular, the regular meeting did, and then we, then you went off and you did a public meeting.
Oh, okay.
The regular meeting adjourned at 6:14.
Oh, okay, so that's right. All right.
Yeah. Never mind.
All right, any other comments or concerns?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Tina? Okay. Now we need to approve the absence of Chris Jones and Connor. I know Chris has called and he lets everyone know. I haven't heard anything from Connor. Anyone hear anything from Connor?
Excuse.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the absence of Chris and Connor?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second again.
Okay.
Susan couldn't be the second.
Okay.
Gotta mix it up a bit.
All right, okay, now we're into the nomination of two members for the Water Tower Selection Committee. Is there anybody that wants to volunteer, or anyone that wants to recommend another board member?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, was that Brian that volunteered?
It's Brian.
Okay. Anyone else? Need another one, one more person?
I'll go ahead and volunteer.
Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to volunteer or be put on by, you know, the board? Anyone? All right, well, can anyone want- Was that Susan?
Not that I'd volunteer too. Yeah.
Okay, so we have three now, so. What do you do now, Jill? Have three people take a vote?
You know what? I'll withdraw because I got to be on the the tile art.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Susan?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Susan and Brian?
I make a motion to approve Susan and Brian.
I'll second. If I can. Okay. All right. Moving along.
You wanna call for the vote?
Okay, thank you. Let's have a vote to approve. Offer in favor, say aye.
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 Any who disapprove? Say nay. All right, motion's gone through. Congratulations, you two.
Yay!
Thank you.
All right, I guess, yeah, I think, I think it's gonna be real fun for you guys to get, do that. I think it's, it's gonna be interesting, and I think you guys are gonna do a good job on it, too. All right, I guess it's gonna be a quick meet tonight, 'cause we have discussion items, and that'd be Jill, and she's gonna go over the 20th Street plan again.
Yes, I just wanted to touch base and keep you up to date on the progress that we've made based on the meetings that we've held in the open house from last week. I have a staff report in front of you, and I'll just briefly, I won't read it word for word, but I'll briefly go through the update we had, and then also meeting that we had the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood. That is, borders the property on the west side. So, just to bring you up to date, of course, as the park board knows, but you hosted the open house for the 20th Street last June at your regular meeting immediately following that. And the information we presented to the public was the survey results, as well as, we had a live poll for folks to vote for the amenities that they wanted in the park, and then kind of the fit and feel aesthetic of it, and choose some materials for the playground, as well as the dog park and, and the trailhead. So some of the comments that we heard from the public, and then also from the park board, were the lighting of the project, the safety system. Susan had brought up with the blue light system is akin to something you'd see at a college campus, landscaping along the West Hand Side, or the west side adjacent to that Cardinal Estates neighborhood. So, staff met with Cardinal Estates, a neighborhood on, at their residence, and walked the line of the property and talked about some of their concerns, and they, they were absolutely right. Where the, where the landscaping was proposed to end, from the aerial looked as if there was natural vegetation there, but it was actually just a tree canopy. So there would be, you know, an open space directly into their yard and their neighborhood. So, we went back to the engineers and the consultants and had that information, or had the landscaping extended north to the existing vegetation, and the neighborhood was really great to meet with and great to talk to, and they were, they were really excited about leaving as much of the natural vegetation as possible, because it was a perfect barrier. It has, it's thick, you can't see through it, there's some blackberries in there, there's some other, you know, plants that would prohibit anyone from being able to reach their neighborhood. So, so they were really, they wanted to convey that information to the city that they want that vegetation to stay, but where that vegetation stops to start, you know, the city's landscaping of that area. So they were great. Answered some questions that they had about the plan, and it was nice to meet them in the field and show them where they were, rather than, you know, looking at it, you know, sometimes through a tablet or some other electronic device. Left them with the plans there and, and heard some positive comments after the fact as well. So that one worked out well. So, then the lighting of the project, under the exhibits attached to your staff report, the engineers have added where there will be lighting present at all of the parking lots. And then we talked about the system of, like, the blue light system or communications. It's a pretty detailed plan that would require some communications directly into the police department, so we would have to do some more research on what that would look like, and then, of course, the costs associated with it. Going into it, but we felt it was really important to put markers along the trail to delineate the link of, to give people, you know, a point of being able to call, whether there's a maintenance concern, or whether there's a safety concern. And so we're looking at what is the appropriate increments to have those, every quarter mile, or, and then what those, those mile markers look like. So, we also turned the plans over to the Lake Stevens Police Department for them to perform their SEP TED review, and talked with the principal, because there was some comments relating to kids using the trail to get to Cavalero Mid High. And so during hours of darkness, there is an area that is, you know, that has the tree cover, and if they're going to school in the morning when it's dark, then, you know, what does that look like? So I talked with the principal there, and the principal said that he didn't have, they don't, they don't collect data on which kids walk to school versus, you know, get a ride or ride the bus. And so, but he would be happy to pass along information so that in the event, that it was, you know, those two months where it's kind of dark at the beginning of school, that he could pass along all the information to his students about staying on the lit sidewalks during that time. And then we're also looking at a solar option for bollards, running electricity down the whole length of the trail. We're not sure if that would conflict with the overhead utility use, and then also, you know, the cost associated with bringing that power in. But solar light, done at Frontier Heights Park and some of our other areas, have been really well received. So, still looking at those for along the trail length, and we'll be bringing that information back. And then also implementing some landscaping that's, you know, just kind of discourages loitering, and within that area between the residential area, it also kind of discourages pets from going in there and ripping up the vegetative buffer in between the residential area and the, and the dog park. So, the engineers did bring their most recent plans to us, and they sent them to us just last week on Friday, so, and they're included in your packet. Details about the parking lots in both of those, and then an overview of the trail alignment in that first phase. So I just wanted to touch base with you and bring you up to speed on what's happened so far, and give any comments you may have.
Yeah, I got a comment or two.
And I do, too, when it's my turn.
My comment is, did you discuss with the homeowners the height of the, the trees you're gonna put in? Because they seem to be concerned about, they didn't want any, you know, two-inch shrubs going in, and I, you know, and I know we don't want to get the 10-foot ones, but, I mean, have you come to any kind of conclusion of how high these buffer trees are gonna be when they plant them?
So we do have a code section that has the, the height of the vari, the variation of vegetation within that buffer. The height of it varies, but then we also have the overhead power lines. So they, the overheads don't want anything that will be over 12 feet at mature height. So I did talk to them about what that looks like, and what a varying screen looks like, so that they're not going to get every, you know, just all the shrubs down low. But we like to do a mixture, so that they're still, you know, they can see out, they can, you know, keep eyes on the park, and they would have, like, you know, a higher variety, and then, you know, with a shrub variety as well. And that's based on our SEP TED information, as well as our, you know, landscaping, landscaping advice on what is the best plants selected for that area.
Russ, I have a couple questions. No, Russ, excuse me, Roger.
I think he might be frozen.
Oh. Mine went kind of crazy, too. I can't see anyone.
Go ahead, Tina, we got you.
Okay, so you can see me.
Yes.
I just, you guys, okay. I was curious as to what is the the police department's crime prevention, environmental design, what is that?
SEP TED is a philosophy on how to prevent crime through environmental design, whether it be the positioning of buildings for school districts or public places, and then it gets down to even park design, and then also landscape design. So for instance, you know, recommend being able to see from the road, you know, into a project, so that they can keep eyes on it more frequently, and then just the, you know, best practices on how to, you know, dissuade the behaviors that you don't want to see, and encourage the behaviors that you do want to see.
Gotcha. And then, when we talked about lighting, I see that parking lots have a lot of lighting. Do we have lighting in the actual park? They look like little ants to me, the lighting, and I don't see any ants.
There are, we typically have not been lighting our play-
Parks.
Because they cuss at us, and so that's been our, our standard operating procedure, is that all parking lots are lit, and but the playgrounds are dark, because that is, is the indicator that you are in the park after park hours.
Right, that makes sense. Okay, so we don't need to light the trail either, because again, we don't want anybody in there after dark.
Right.
Okay.
No, with this particular section of trail, I will say as well, is I did take a look at what the surrounding neighborhoods look like, and if the kids are coming through on 12th Street or 8th Street, if they want, you know, hey, use the trail, that's, you know, exactly what it's intended for, but during hours of darkness, there is a raised sidewalk and lighting for their route of travel that they could take as an alternative as well.
Okay.
Jill, this is Brian. Would there be, is there a reason there's not gonna be lighting on the trail? I mean, I'm just considering winter, early dark hours, people that might want to use it to commute or ride their bikes from one place to another. You said there might be lighted bollards?
Correct.
Would that be across the whole length of the trail?
That's something that the city has to, has to do an analysis on, because of the cost associated with lighting a trail of that magnitude, especially with, you know, this being the first phase of a very robust trail system. If it is, if it is lit, you know, then, then people tend to think it's open and it's, it's ready for use. And, you know, along like our South Lake Stevens Trail that joins in with this, that's, you know, in a place where a sidewalk would have been, so it's raised, it's, you know, it's a dual-purpose, multi-use path. Whereas something like this, we definitely need to perform an analysis and, and see if that's something that, you know, that's even feasible budget-wise, and then also activity-wise. You know, are we gonna have enough staff to patrol that area? You know, on the Centennial Trail, it's very purposefully dark during, during, you know, it's kept dark. But then in, in more concentrated areas, you know, as it passes through the center of Arlington, you know, and other places, it is lit, because that's their metropolitan, you know, they can have eyes on it all the time.
Jill, I'd like to say something else. I don't know what happened to my computer, but it cut out, but as far as the lights go again, you were talking about having blue lights, those are the low lights, like a college campus along the trail. Would those be all tied together solarly, so you could use it on a timer? Are they gonna be individual that just go on and off when the sun goes down, or how's that gonna be? Because I think that if you turn all the lights out at the park, you can, you know, you can also make sure people know that they can still see when they're going through the trail.
Yeah, so the blue light system is, it's a safety system, and it's not necessarily for illumination, but it would be like a panic button, for lack of a better term.
Right.
So people could, you know, if they were in danger, or they were having, you know, they could hit the button. Those have a community, a very detailed communication system, and then those are, they're sent directly to the police department, or wherever their dispatch center is. And so that is a, is a pretty detailed system. So that is a separate system that actually, than lighting the trail itself. So, again, we have to do the analysis for the, the safety system, and then also with the bollards. If we did a solar option with the bollards, those are all independent lights that come on, depending on when their darkness occurs at that site.
All right, thank you.
Wow.
All right, I think, any other comments on the 20th Street, anyone?
This is Susan, I had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Susan.
Jumping in here.
That's fine.
I had a quick question. On the parking lot, it's off of 12th Street. It's kind of a niche thing, and probably common sense would dictate here anyway. When they're showing that the concrete pad with a three-bike rack right there toward the 12th Street section, I would just recommend rotating that, so that people aren't, like, the stop bar, is that something that permanently stays out, or does that go up and down? What is that?
The stop bar is the painting on the, the driveway that shows where you should be stopping. You see them a lot of times.
Gotcha. Okay, it's not a physical bar. No, I was just thinking, moving the bike rack back a little bit, so people aren't trying to put their bikes in and out, right in the, where the ingress egress is. So they just move it back, little corner of the section are rotated, so it's, you know, going perpendicular to what it is right now, so people aren't trying to maneuver their bikes and get locked up when they're kind of in the line of traffic. That's, again, I'm sure common sense, they would have done that anyway.
That's great. I will, I'll take that down.
Yeah, that's really good.
I have one more quick comment. Go, I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
Sorry. And I just was clarifying, from a camera standpoint, weren't we gonna have some cameras in here?
Russ, I'll defer to you. I don't know if I've heard anything on the cameras.
I would expect that we will have cameras installed at both parking lots.
Okay, just thinking, I don't want to trash those restrooms.
Any else, Susan?
And then, yeah, last question, sorry, no, I'll give it up here. When we're talking about the, on 20th Street now, and looking to the north side of 20th Street, and so the landscape, landscape screening buffer looks like it is, you know, kind of protecting, you know, to the east there, as it goes north, as far as it's going straight up. Is there any buffer, the homes that are adjacent to that parking area? Is there, is there landscape stuff in there, or is it just the gravel driveway and fencing that's to the west? In the north, right there.
Oh, along the, the westernmost edge of the parking lot?
Yeah, and then the northern, like, you know, half of it. Is it, because there's the lights there, right?
Right.
And, but is there any kind of a protective buffer, is it just fencing to those homes that are right there?
I know right now that there is a six-foot wood solid fence in both of those locations, and then I'm gonna have to
Okay.
Euro in on, on that for, is there, I will check and see on the landscaping for the parking lot.
Yeah, there, there will be landscaping there. We just don't have those details yet.
Okay. That's it.
Thanks, Susan.
And I had one more go back, Roger, when it's my turn.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, we didn't talk about the amenities, is it the features? I always get those mixed up, the features. So, on the survey results that came back, the there was something that said that it was composite, and the other one said it was wood, or the, I don't remember which one was what. And I'm hoping that when we figure, I think it was like benches were composite, and playground was wood. Is it something like that, Jill?
Yes, and I, on the playground, composite and wood were really, really close.
Yeah. I just think we may need to make sure we're doing the same thing, that even though they were really close, we shouldn't, I don't, I don't think aesthetically it will look good if we have wood be one thing and composite be another. I think we need to go one or the other. Just my idea.
It'll probably actually come down to a matter of cost, since the survey results and the live results were so close, that there's really a margin of error. So I think we'll probably evaluate that one on a cost.
Okay. Yeah, just as long as, I think, as long as they look together.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to Parks Update. Back to Jill again.
So we've had a lot moving and shaking, so, and we're getting back to the mission and vision with the, with the park board. This one, I don't know if it was gonna be too much for, for this meeting, and, and so I will pause on that, but we will bring it back. North Cove, the cameras have been installed, and the parking, or the, the playground is really, really popular. I am, I know that it's full on time, and we've received comments about it. And Saturday, July 24th, the Arts and Parks Foundation is hosting an event, and we will have fireworks delivered. And when the fireworks for the commercial display are delivered, they have to be secured, so we have to shut down the North Cove Boat Launch for Saturday. So, and then after the, it'll open back up on its normal scheduled time on Sunday. So, the restrooms down at Davies Beach, they got painted. Urgent Technologies came in on their day of service and did that, and they turned out really, really nice. We also, along all of the lockers along the beach for life vests, those ones were all stocked last week by the police department. They received a bunch of, like, safe kids.
Jill, how are those, how are those life jacket stations? Are they holding up pretty good?
Yes, I did see the one at Davies a couple times, and it, it looks brand new. It's I think there's one that's wood. The metal ones are, are great.
Okay.
Jill, I had, yeah, sorry, I had a question about the cameras. I was wondering when they were installed, and I, if I missed it, where the placement of the cameras would be? Or where, where they're at currently?
At North Cove, they're in the picnic shelter, they're, they get a view of the, of the entire park. I don't know the dates that they were installed, but they have been installed and they're active.
Okay, I was just curious. We were there with, with our kids, and somebody keyed our car. That's the, it was a personal reason.
Contact Lake Stevens Police Department, and they can probably-
Yeah, we just contacted the, I think we just contacted our insurance company.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just curious. I think it's great. I think it's important, so it's, it's a good thing they have.
Okay.
And have we seen any vandalism decrease?
I do not know. I can definitely find out and bring that back to you. I'll have to consult with the police department.
Yeah, sure.
It's too early to tell, but we've, the overall vandalism over the last couple of months has really not slowed down.
Okay. Wow.
The community gardens, as you know, and we've talked about, had one of their long-term volunteers step down. Debbie Dottry is gonna be remaining in the gardens as their long-term volunteer, but she could use some help. So if you know of anyone that wants to volunteer in the gardens on a long-term basis, they, the primary duties are harvesting vegetables and turning over beds, and they, they contribute a lot of their, their time growing things, and watering, and doing general garden, garden-type activities. And we also did receive confirmation that we were successful in getting the land water conservation grant from phases at Eagle Ridge Park. That was exciting. At Lundine, the parking lot was resurfaced, and a crosswalk was added to the entrance, to get folks from one sidewalk to the other. There is a disc golf tournament at Catherine Creek on the 24th, on the same day that the park, Arts and Parks Foundation is hosting Light Up Lake Stevens. And then for events, recreation and culture, as we just went over, about Light Up Lake Stevens. And then there's also Run For Your Life. It's a suicide awareness fun run. Application for their race, it's one mile, a 5K and a 10K, gonna be in downtown. They'll have vendors there, as well as mental health counselors, and a beer garden, food trucks, they really want to celebrate and-
You know what the cost is, center?
I don't know what it is, Roger. Their website is, is where they, you would sign up and then also get your
Okay.
And that's-
Is the website Run For Your Life?
It is. It's Run For Your Life Lake Stevens. It's a neat, it's a neat group. He has, one of the founders of the race did the 24-hour run on the Centennial Trail earlier. Yeah, for suicide awareness.
Wow.
And mental health. Tai Chi is still being held for free to the public, Sundays at noon at North Cove Park. And the Six Week Fitness Challenge and Mixed Fit are at Lundine. This, one of the instructors that does the Six Week Challenge was awarded first place in a a pretty big competition. So we're happy about that. And she also extended to, to allow for another class, I believe in August. That will, that will start up. The website has that involved. If you have any questions, let me know. Hydrology Stand Up Paddle Boards has been renting. They are open, I know, over the weekends and then periodically through the week, just kind of depending on weather.
Jill, I have a quick question about that. Are we still not doing concessions because of the market? Like we, we had a concession stand over there by the paddle boards. And then I think last year we chose not to allow the concession.
At Lundine?
Yeah.
They did operate last year and they did have the concessions. And they are planning, or they are doing that again this year.
Oh, okay, I missed, missed that.
Skyhawks sold out on a couple of their summer camps already. So we're getting a lot of kiddos out and about. And the Lake Stevens Community Band held their first performance at the Farmer's Market, June 23rd. That was pretty neat. And then the community theater, the Shakespeare in the Park, has reached out to the city and they have actors and they are eager to come and do a performance. So we're looking at August and having a children's show. I think we've decided on Hercules and the Golden Apple for that. That'll be, I think, about six o'clock on the 22nd, but we're still firming up those, those details in August.
You'd had your hand up. Did you have a comment for the group?
I actually never lowered it after I put it up a while ago, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Jill, this is Brian. I had a question about the pump track parcel, if there had been any updates on that. Now, the mayor and Russ, I think, were working with the power company to see if there was a potential option there.
Yeah, I'll defer to Russ on that.
Yeah, no, no updates. That's probably not a project, I think, that we mentioned that we're going to take on until probably fall of this year.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
I could say word is getting out already about the pump track. I heard it. I heard, overheard a conversation at the Farmer's Market between two people talking about the pump track. So people are excited.
Was there a cost share agreement with, what is it, Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance or something that they're trying to produce? Is that how they're trying to get involved with the proposal? Okay. We've worked with them in the past and, and then they're pretty easy to work with. But yeah, that's really the only feedback I would have for that project.
Any other comments for Jill?
I was, I have a question or thought. With the vandalism, what age roughly is it? 12, 16? Below that? Is there somehow we can get those kids involved that they're not wandering around with nothing to do?
Actually
Look into. Whether they could help clean something or like look back on it and say, oh, I helped with that or something.
It's interesting. It's actually, we're seeing some and Russ can attend, they're adults. And so it's, it's disheartening.
Wow.
Late teens, maybe early twenties. I mean, we do have a couple of them on camera now and it's they're of driving age, though.
I'll be darned. Okay, I just made the assumption they were younger than 16, but
Wow, that's sad.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, is there any board members have any reports they'd like to present?
I do.
Tina?
So Jill mentioned Light Up Lake Stevens, the Arts and Park Foundation is sponsoring this. It starts at five o'clock in North Cove Park. And there's going to be food trucks and a beer garden. And the community band will play. And then there will be a boat parade and then the fireworks at 10 o'clock. And the Arts and Park Foundation is spending every other week at the Farmer's Market. So come on by and say hello to the Arts and Park Foundation this Wednesday.
Great.
And that's it.
Anyone else? Any reports? I guess council report, but I don't think there's any councilors with us today. Russ, anything you'd like to add or anything or?
No, there's no news yet for the, the park board.
Okay. All right, future agenda items. Anyone have any future agenda items for next week's meeting or any comments? Carl? Or Brian? Or go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, me? Okay. I was going to mention that the, I was curious as to where we're at with the, the vision statement for the board and, and parks. And I was hoping that maybe we could revisit that piece.
Okay. Who else? Ryan, you have anything? Marlene? All right, anyone else? I've got a couple of things. I want to know when we can start meeting in person again. Because it's, everything's winding down and so I just wonder if there's a timeline with the city with that? Or is it, you know, citywide or can we do our own little individual groups or what's, what's going on with that?
It's probably not going to be till at least September. We're still working through the logistics. City Council has pushed off their reopening a couple of times. So we'll follow suit with the city council when they make their decision. And when we figure out what all the protocols need to look like for public participation and public gatherings. Little different for government than for some private events, so. And one of our big concerns is now that the mask mandate has been lifted partially for vaccinated peoples, it's still the responsibility of, say, the the, the group in charge to verify vaccination status. And that's just not something we want to put our staff in position to do at this point.
Okay, because that was going to be my second question is when we were going to have the official park openings. But that, I'm sure that ties in with what you just said, so. Yeah, all right. That's it for me. Anyone else?
It's like Susan has her hand up.
Okay, I, sorry, I can't see my screen. Only hat puts like about four or five people up at a time, going back and forth. So sorry, Susan, go ahead.
Oh, no worries. This is just a general comment, something I saw in like one of the Lake Stevens, like Facebook things about a park that must be part of a, kind of a community, maybe HOA type thing. I like, they referred to it as Fourth Street Park. And they were commenting about how it was kind of in disarray. And again, it was, I think supposedly part of a, an HOA type thing. Jill, have you heard anything about like
Can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
So that question came to me today. It is privately owned. The equipment is privately owned. The city transferred ownership and easement rights to that neighborhood in 2009. So all of the play equipment maintenance responsibilities for park and open space are with the private development. The city just retains ownership of the underlying property.
So their comment was it would almost be better just to raise it and have it be all grass.
Yeah, that would be up to the, that group to decide. It's, you know, their responsibility.
Right.
Yeah, Russ, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So it's not something that we'd be interested in taking back?
Probably not at this point where our maintenance capabilities are spread as thin as they can be.
Okay.
And Russ, I was wondering if there's any more news on that clubhouse you were, they were looking to take over from the neighborhood?
Yes, the original property owner has signed a deed and dedication over to the city. We're waiting to get the release of interest from the HOA that should be at City Hall today and then it will get recorded this week. So yeah, then we will have ownership of that.
Exciting. It's exciting.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Tina, second it? Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Take care, everyone.
You too.